All right.
We're ready.
All right, I'd like to call the special budget meeting workshop to order with a roll call roll please.
Almost there. It's okay. Okay, roll call, Chisholm. Speaker.
Thank you. Reporting public notice, Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Public notices and agendas were mailed to the final act reporter, radio station KFIZ, KFIZ 107, actually the bowl, 107.1, the bowl if you will, and WFDL radio, and agendas were posted in the district office, US Bank and Municipal Building on Friday, September 25th, 2015.
Please rise for the public.
Budget allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you everybody for coming. We'll be able to, I think you guys got all the information, there's really, this is I think the first time where we could say that we were pleasantly at some really, I think, some things and that's based on, I think, a lot of the great work that's been going on around here. So, we're gonna go through the budget. Once again, first thing we'll do is go through the timeline. Maria will take the lead on this, I'll also interject things sometimes, administrative team, if there's anything that you see, let us know as we go through and we can go from there. So, the idea is we have about half an hour, forty-five minutes to go through the budget. Then, when we get to the regular meeting, there's an agenda to pass this, which will be very little discussion, I'm guessing, since we'll answer all the questions now and hopefully we'll be very efficient. So, also, if anybody wants any water, let me know, I can get a couple bottles of water, I have some in the fridge and I'll let them mix some as we're going on. So, without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Maria. Everybody had gotten this sent to them and then what I'm gonna do is just go from the beginning timeline and Maria can talk through that a little bit and we'll go through our budget.
All right. Thank you, everybody. On the timeline, we're down to the bottom of the timeline now in October, we are publishing the proposed bud, well, the budget will be published ten days before the next meeting, before the annual meeting. And that's where the voters will come and approve the levy. But tonight, I'm here to report fourteen, fifteen numbers. Our audit is complete and in the books and already filed with DPI, so good news there. And then we'll look at the preliminary numbers for next year. And then the sixteen, seventeen preliminary numbers will come at the next meeting as well. I just got the Baird budget model back on Friday, so I've started looking at it today. So, that will, that's one of our objectives with our budget, we want a budget on a two-year cycle. So, we'll be able to start looking at that next meeting. But as Aaron said, he got the packet, there's only good news really to share.
One thing that Maria, I'll just go on, we, three years ago, we set up our philosophies that drive the budget to look at it in two-year cycle since we now have that budget set. If there's a budget fix-it bill, which, you know, the government always has opportunity to do those things based on revenues, that could happen, but we look at it in two-year process, maximize our resources available to districts or the district and then make additions within the budget. And if not, as we're going through the process, I think we had an excellent meeting, our facilities committee, you know, if we are gonna go outside of what our levy allows to make sure we communicate that and have valid reasons.
Okay, so the 2014-15 recap, we've been talking about it throughout the year, I've been trying to keep you as updated as possible on 14-15 and now, as I said, the final numbers are in. Our original projection, if you remember, oh gosh, a year ago, we projected about $228,000 deficit. And that doesn't include the Fund 49, if you remember, that's the athletic complex which Fund 10 absorbs that deficit of $560,000. Then when I reported to you in May, it looked like we were gonna have a $237,000 deficit. And now, after the audit, it turned out to be a $98,000 deficit. Again, that does not include the $560,000 absorption of Fund 49. And on, a little bit further down, I just gave you some of the highlights and some of the contributing factors to the deficit and actually the lesser deficit that we experienced. But our fund balance is still very healthy at 23.58. At that percentage, we should not be able to, we shouldn't have to short-term borrow. However, you'll see at the annual, or at the meeting tonight, we are gonna pass that term loan agreement with the bank. It's kind of our safety net if we shouldn't need to borrow for a short amount tonight. So, you'll see that at the next meeting. But at 23.58, we should, it's, that's kind of our, that's our base really, we're really watching it at that fund balance level. So, some of the successes, and please ask questions along the way, some of our successes this year, and administrators, please interject, any other successes that happened in your building that contributed a good year? But we increased our summer school FTE by two, I think it was actually five kids and then that translated into two FTE, was that correct?
I'm not sure on the final calculation.
Okay, two FTE.
Now, just so everybody, really quick, FTE is full-time equivalent and that's what we can get aid. And that's number isn't the number of kids in the seat because we get like, I think it's like almost two-thirds, we can count a four care. On summer school, it's how many hours they attend and then we take that, divide it by amount, that equals an FTE and that's where, we had more kids going more hours, so we had the equivalent of another, two more full-time, like if a kid went from all year in school, that was that. And then FTE is also something that, and Maria will bring this up, but just to kind of give you an idea, the state looks at a three-year rolling average. So, if you're increasing in your enrollment and your FTEs, you don't get to realize that all at one time. You realize it as you continue to go on. In reverse, when we were a few years ago in a decline, it was also a three-year rolling average, so you didn't feel the hit as much. So, when you look at that FTE, that's not how many kids we have in our seats. In our seats, we have right around 1,200-ish, but our FTE is closer to 1,300, correct?
We have about 1,300 in our seats.
In our seats, excuse me, our FTE is less. So, we can't, because we have new kids, but the new kids that we have this year, we can't count fully until next year. So, that FTE is what we get aided on, but it's not how many kids are in our seats. So, just kind of, that, it's very convoluted and we have the third Friday count, it's the second January count, second Friday in January?
Yes.
So, and then they average that. This is really, really, I think, archaic, it's like biometric screening. You get it on one day and then that's a snapshot of everything, when the reality of it is, it's what you're doing all the time. So, when Maria talks about FTE, that's really, when I look at the business manager, what Maria does really, really well is how can we figure to get more FTE, which is the aidable amount that we get to help our students.
All right. Some of the other successes in 14-15, we maintained our eight percent insurance premium for our staff and the $100, $200 deductible, which is still one of the lowest in the states. Now, as of September 1st, which is actually the new school year, we did raise the insurance premium to 10% to cover our costs. Our insurance premiums, we projected to go up 13%. Right now, WPS is actually quoting us 16%. So, we're in negotiations right now. We should have some other options, but that's where we stand right now.
And we'll have that in October, we're hoping, we have it in our committee, we're hoping in October to bring a recommendation of what insurance company that will go to or recommend.
We had staff wage increases, we refinanced our long-term debt, if you remember that, and that's gonna realize a hundred, almost $160,000 savings over three years, just in interest. Let's see. We had 10 additional full-time equivalent students in 14-15 and our open enrollment ins versus outs, we had a net gain of 29. So, that's another revenue builder for us. We get a lot of kids, especially from Conde Lhasa coming in.
They give this number times $6,500.
Right, right. So, our net revenues, by the time we paid everybody who left and, or the kids that left us and the revenue that we took in, we netted about $177,000 in open enrollment.
And Maria's got a slide that'll explain this little more.
Yes, I'll show you the trend. We also did the facility study, which Bray did that and we're, and all you all know, we're in the midst of continuing to study our facilities and help with the next plan.
And I want to also thank all of you for being on that committee, it makes it so much easier to not have to have one person tell another person and to be able to have those conversations so we're all on the same page. So, that's, I appreciate that dedication.
Open enrollment net revenues?
Yes.
Is that, how does that play out with our special needs? Is that separate? Is that in this?
This is overall, yes. I take the special ed and the regular ed students in and subtract that out and that's our revenue.
And that's a good question, because next year, there's gonna be a change. Right now, what'll happen is if a student open enrolls to our school district and they have special services, what we'll do is Maria and Debbie will get together and they'll cost out like this child needs instructional aid, this child needs to have whatever other OP therapy, and then we cost that out to them. Then they make a decision if that's cost-effective or not and then if they okay it, then they come. Most of the students, I would say probably 90%, there is no additional cost because it's, there is no more additional cost. Now, next year, the way it currently sits in the budget, it's gonna change where that costing no matter, will matter no more and regardless, for every special ed student open enrolled, you get $12,000. Now, that's equity there, we, as superintendents, we've already started talking about how we can get around that so it matches what the costs are, but that's gonna cause some significant challenges, I think, for some districts next year. For us, it'd be a windfall, but it isn't appropriate for what it costs to educate some of those kids, so we're gonna have to work through that.
Yeah, you've got some students in the area that are over six figures, right?
Right. And if there are, is that something, but we also get aided on high costs, like we get $150,000 a year, we have been, for higher cost student, we're one with us, Hartford and.
There's only a handful of five or six.
There's some special places that are significant expenses to those districts.
And we also get something called transfer service, so if we have a kid that moves in here, that's high cost special ed that was somewhere else, we could, that's something Maria's been excellent at doing also. So, yeah, so the whole idea of the special ed, it doesn't cost our district more, we get those resources from other districts, is I guess the way to look at it. The special ed students from other districts aren't hampering the resources that we get.
So much, right, right. Right now, we get $6,735 or something like that for, for just a no extra cost special ed student. So, we will be getting $12,000 for those. But we do, we did just send once a student over to Conde Lhasa, it's gonna be a high cost. We will only have to pay $12,000, we will also get kids that we're educating here from Conde, so.
Is that a new student or is that one that we?
It is, that's a new one going out for sure.
And I'll bring an update next year as we flush this out, I think we, I think we're gonna use something called a 6603 agreement more and more, which is more accurate to what costs are. We're gonna have to figure this out because this isn't, it maybe on paper makes sense, but it's gonna be a crippling thing to many districts and it's not equitable, so we have to figure out how to do that. Not now.
No, no, still a lot of questions about that. Any questions on 14-15? The auditors were very pleased, we've had the same team now for three years and we hope to continue with them because they, they now know us, they like us, they can see continual improvements like in our, in our controls, our internal controls. We continue, with a small opposite, it's hard to split up all of the duties to make sure that our internal controls are sound, but they are seeing, we are constantly making improvements and they're seeing that, so we're always trying right now.
And what I also wanna do is thank you because as we budget, we try to get this as close as we can, knowing that there's some, that hopefully we can see savings, but we don't know for sure. And having the board understand, we're not gonna like, like undersell and say, oh, we're gonna be in this big deficit and then voila, we wanna get as close to zero as we can, but the reality of it is, what I'm very happy is that the board has given the district the authority to say, hey, this is what we think we need now. Now, throughout the year, things are gonna happen that we're gonna try to get this down and we've been able to do that. So, on a 14-plus million dollar budget, I mean, with giving raises, maintaining healthcare, adding students, without getting any additional or what, we did get a little additional categorical aid, we were able to get it here, so I just wanna thank the board for that vision, giving us those opportunities to continue to budget like this and then continue to try to work to get ourselves closer. Otherwise, a lot of districts, what's wound up happening, not a lot, but other districts' mindset is, hey, this is what it is right here, so now we're gonna cut. So, they get rid of the resources at the beginning of the year and then they find out at the end of the year, oh, we had a surplus or, oh, it wasn't as bad. And I don't know, especially if we're looking at asking the community for more support, the more honest we can be and the more resources we can have for our kids, we found that to be very helpful. And I wanna appreciate, I wanna send once again appreciation because sometimes these can look undaunting, but by giving us that authority to know that, hey, and we've shown over the years that we'll work to it, we wanna have the people we need. It's not like we're running on a robust ship here, we're running pretty lean, but the decisions we make in our budget hopefully will meet the students' needs. So, thank you.
All right. Moving on to 15-16. And I have a long list of main points that went into building the budget and I could go on and on. When we finish this up on Friday, Aaron and I kept saying, oh, and we did this, oh, and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do this. So, I mean, there's, the year is young and we have a lot of things on the backs of our minds, things that can affect the budget positively. But just as a highlight, we are presenting a balanced budget tonight, which we haven't been able to do in a long time, so that's exciting. Most of that is due to getting 60 additional FTE this year. That's huge. While other districts around us are losing kids, we are gaining them. Thirty-five of them, interestingly enough, are EL students, they are spreading the word that this is where you want to send your children, so a lot of Spanish-speaking students, which is where the transfer of service comes in. We have to hire additional staff to support these kids and DPI allows us to levy for that once. So, I'm able to add $220,000 to our revenue limit. If you remember, our revenue limit is aid and taxes, so I was able to add $220,000 to our revenue limit to offset the cost of the hiring that we're gonna have to do. And that's one teacher, two aides and an interpreter.
Fernando is our interpreter.
These kids are gonna be in great shape.
And this is huge, what Maria did here with that and it was actually, came up with the strategy, what, two days before it had to be done, so this was huge for that. But also, what's so, what's interesting for us, like to think about the budget and when we have the aid, remember, I'm just gonna use simple numbers, let's say it's $10,000, it's more than that, but let's say it's $10,000. Remember like in 14, 15, it might've been 40, or it might've been 4,000, local 6,000 and then this year, remember, we had more aid. So, now, from the state, we might be getting 7,000, it's not, this isn't just for example, right? So, we're getting more from the state, which means we still have the same revenue cap, but we're getting more from the state. Now, one thing to remember is remember that we have our levy, which is amount of money that we can raise. We couldn't increase our levy, we could keep it the same because we got more from the state, so that means less locally. Now, our original plan was, we're gonna over levy, how much were we gonna over levy?
$300,000.
Okay, so, we're gonna over levy $300,000 to do those, only one thing we can do when we over levy, that's pay down existing debt. So, we were, we have already proposed keeping the levy the same and doing this, but now, because of this, when we look at that 206,000, 667, part of that is state aided, it's part of it's local. So, what happens is, is this number then, and how much do we have now?
About $180,000.
So, $180,000, we're still recommending to over levy to downpay the budget and then that other 120, we're putting in there. So, we had actually, because of that, we're able to levy above the normal because of the transfer of students. But now, let's say that we had less state aid. If we had less state aid, our levy would've went up and then with transfer of students, that we would've asked for more money still, okay? So, because of how we budgeted and how we've been doing the things in the past, we got more state aid, which freed up room for the taxpayer, so when we did get the authority because of the increased students and the transfer of aid, that the taxpayer's not gonna feel that increase. Does that make sense? So, this all kinda works together, but if we wouldn't have got increased state aid because of how we budgeted and adjusted our budget and did those things, we wouldn't have had that room so that we get these new resources and they can help us.
Okay. If we?
No, but I mean, the reason it's important is when you look at the taxpayers and we look at what we're levying, we're, it's so tied in when you look at funds, it's so tied into what you can use that money for. This transfer of aid, now that's gonna be part of our base, which is brilliant. So, now, we've increased our base $206,000 from this point forward. Now, this year, when they look at the audit, they're gonna look at, hey, did you spend that on interpreters, did you spend that on aides, all that, and when we get more efficient, this money now becomes money that we use in Fund 10 to help us with everything. So, it's really huge and we've been able to do it within what the expected levy from our public is. So, that's how, like when we come to the adjusted budget in the spring, which we hadn't done that, I think, before Maria got here, that says, hey, DPI, we're actually changing, our budget changed a little bit because of these things, then they look at that and that's what we get aided on. Some districts end up saying, hey, we made $400,000, look at us, their aid goes way down. So, we have trust funds 46 and 73, so now we have places where if we do have an increase, we can look at different things or we can put those into those funds so that our aidable amount is the same and we should not lose aid. That makes sense? So, in the budget, if we do it right, you will, we will never report that we made money. What we will report is, and what we'll recommend is, we take the money that's an additional, we put it into our OPEB trust for our retirements, that trust fund 73, that can only be used for that, or remember, we passed that kind of vanilla building plan for 10 years, we could put in that trust from 46 and that's all aidable money. So, all these things matter, the past mattered so that when we came up with this, it worked. And that's because of Maria and what she's been able to look at.
Well, and thanks to the administrators, when Aaron mentioned that transfer of service, we were all scrambling to find out how many kids we had, how many Spanish-speaking kids that were coming in, everybody, I was getting emails from them left and right so that we could get that into DPI on time. So, kudos to them.
We have ten kindergarteners that we couldn't even count in that because they didn't receive EL services last year, you know, they're in kindergarten now, so they didn't receive it last year, no one knew that they received it, so they aren't included.
Yeah, so, but we were able to get quite a bit of revenue.
Which, once again, if you hear from the public, well, those kids are so, those kids aren't doing anything. Those kids bring in revenue that then we can use in order to help, find the help and all the kids that we have in our district help all the other kids learn about tolerance, to learn about getting along with each other and to learn about culture, so.
And we're not making money on them, what I'm taking, what we're taking in, in that extra revenue limit, we're paying out the salary stuff and so, we're not making money on them, that's not our goal here. Okay, so moving down, I just wanna jump to the fourth point, the OPIs versus the OPOs. You'll hear me mention that's a moving target because there really is no deadline for open enrollment anymore. They can come in under the exception and there really is not an exception that doesn't fly. So, that, that will jump around a lot during the year and on Friday, Friday was the deadline to get in all of the open enrollment from all of the districts and the DPI website was down. So, they've extended it to today and Maureen just told me today that number has already changed. So, we had 240 open enrolled in and 225 open enrolled out. So, we have a net gain of 15 kids. So, our open enrollment is positive, it's just not as positive as last year. So, and with the old numbers, the projection was about $118,000 revenue on them, but I won't have to recalculate that.
And one of the reasons we have more open enrolled or less open enrolled in, some of the families moved to the village or the friendship, so they live somewhere else, their kids are going there, they moved here. So, I mean, it's, the biggest number is the revenue that we get in, the state positive.
Let's see, we talked about the prepayment of long-term debt, right now, I have budgeted $181,000. If, and that will keep our mill rates, the average mill rate, the same at $9.64. We've been, we've been trying to hold that steady and I'll show you a slide that will show that, that will demonstrate that. That could change on October 15th, we will get our state aid number from DPI, so I'll be able to actually finalize that number then because that one will depend on what aid we're getting. Let's see. We started up practically the way in the middle school and over at FLC. We, I talked about the increase portion of the health insurance premium, that went from eight percent to 10%, still very, very low, the average seems to be 12%. Districts are mimicking the state plan, which is 12.6% premium, that's the minimum, so we are still well below that. We are also currently planning to change the deductible from 100, 200 up to 250, 500 beginning in January. Depending on how these next couple months look, we'll evaluate that, we'll reevaluate that. We're hoping to be able to hold it at 100, 200, but the 250, 500 is still in the budget. We talked about transfer of service, the E3 Academy, did you wanna talk about that at all?
I think it's going pretty much toward learning and stuff, but for a time, but then Melanie, I call, in October, we'll do a little bit more about E3 Academy.
All right. Let me see here, five altar students. I called up St. Mary's Springs, WLA and CWC.
C.
There were none from CWC. We had one go to WLA and four over St. Mary's Springs.
Well, it should be one a bagel.
What do I have? Oh, one a bagel, sorry.
Are those new students to those?
I don't know. That is a question.
Students that are already in.
We don't know. We don't know. But we will, we will be counting them and then we have to send part of our, our aid over to them. But we'll gain a little bit, we'll gain like $2,000 on each of those kids, so, but only five, which is, that's not bad.
But that's part of the levy too?
Yeah.
So, go out and tell people, hey, we have to levy now for private school students.
Okay, I'm gonna fly through the rest of this pretty quickly. The next, the next several pages are the budget adoption, that's what we'll be adopting tonight. That goes into a little bit more detail, line items of the budget. I just wanted to, I just wanted to take a look at the graphs and just see if you guys have any questions on the trends, like for the full-time equivalency. Looks awesome since 2011, 12, we've been increasing our full-time equivalency, big jump this year. Like I said, 35 of them are due to our EL kids, which is, is great.
This is great news to our, or information for we look at what our needs are for facilities. We have more students now. We have more students now than we've had in maybe since the 90s.
And as Erin said, you can see we're going up 60 kids. But if you, on my revenue limit worksheet, we're only, we will have 1,293 FTE. We will actually only get revenue limit for 1,250 because of that three-year rolling average. So they're averaging in 1,223, if you look at their graph. 1233 and 1293, we get an average of that as revenue limit.
So even if we stay at stagnant enrollment for the next year, we'll have increased because we're going to pick up more because that'll be 233, 1293, 1293, if we do.
Back in like 2008 to 2011, they used to, they still have a declining enrollment exemption, so we took advantage of that. We lost that years ago.
Which is good.
Which is great, yeah. Yep. The next slide shows the open enrollment in and out. This is a new slide. We didn't have this from last year. So I just wanted to show that gap and how we really are maintaining the ins and outs, having more in versus out. The blue line shows the open enroll in and the red line shows the open enroll out.
And this right here at 10, in the change of open enrollment rules, you can see what happened since. Quite a bit of volatility.
And then I'm showing our, our deficit at the beginning and then how we've been actually showing positive revenue in the last five, six years.
So in the past decade, we've gone from a negative of, you know, 40, 43 kids and 230, negative 238, to an increase of what, 15 now? Because this has changed a little bit and 120,000 would be around. So we've seen quite a bit of swing in them all the time. In the highest poverty school district in Caesar City. So I mean, it's amazing what we've been able to do and it comes down to the people.
This is our fund balance history. We've got 2011, 12 is that when the, is that when we built the?
Oh, this was, what happened here is we had, this is, this is when there was that one flip in our, and we had a $330,000 surplus, remember? So we had that there and then our aid went down because we had some, well, we figured it out. But that's when we started to do our budgeting different and we started to do it. But it was at 10, there were some savings and more savings that we didn't know that we'd realized, so.
So we're, our goal is to maintain right around the 20, between 20 and 23% is a comfortable fund balance for us. So, looking really, really good. And just a quick peek at 16, 17 looks really, really good too. Tax levy history. We've been pretty much maintaining since 11, 12 again. No, no big jumps. Again, we're, we're doing this just as, well, to save money on interest on our long-term debt and just to stabilize that mill rate in case we would want to go to referendum. It's easier to sell a referendum that says we can get all of this without even raising your taxes. It's like picking money out, you know, starting a Christmas club and you don't even notice it coming out of your check. You're so used to it. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tool that we can use to, to maintain that levy amount. If we did not over levy, our mill rate would drop to about $9.20 if, if everything stayed the same.
And one thing that Maria will do is when we get to the annual meeting, on that third Monday in October, we'll have comparables. So you'll say, well, what's that look like compared to Oakfield, to Fond du Lac, to Oshkosh, to any of those? And well, how is that, what's that comparable? So, that's, that'll be a little bit more, because you see this in the vacuum. And I think what is Fond du Lac is going to be $10.06 or something around there?
I remember the final one.
So you'll be able to get an idea of what, what that is comparative to other communities, school districts. Now, one other thing too, depending if you live out in Van Dyne or Friendship or the town of Fond du Lac or Village, we're also going to get our equalized, is it, what is that, equalized aid? Equalized value. That's where they look at how much property value is in our different municipalities. And since we serve six of them, if Friendship goes up in value and or Fond du Lac goes down in value of the village, then that, that debt gets shared differently. So it's kind of to say where the highest value is. Normally it's, we've been seeing a decrease, so it really hasn't impacted anybody much. So we'll see how that all works out. But that, when you see this number, 964, this isn't like, hey, everybody, this is what it's going to be. Friendships could be more or less, Village could be more or less, the town could be more or less, the Fond du Lac. This is just the average. So that's one of the hardest things to do is to say boom, and then somebody looks at their tax bill and say, you know, you're full of it because mine's different, so. But if any tax increase happens, it's because of the village or, yeah, it'd be the village or the colonieships, the way that we're performing.
That is all I have. We have three minutes for questions if you've got any. And you can call or email anytime. I can get you, well, actually, the, the report that you get, part of the treasures report, that has the full-blown line-by-line budget in it. So you'll be able to see that very first column is our budget this year. So if you want anything even more detailed, you have it. But if you ever want to comment into center or give a question.
So one of the things we'll look at when we look at how our health insurance comes in, look at our HR rate, but we're still looking at some, we haven't seen any savings in that, actually more costs. We're hoping that we could probably see some savings or revenue increase in different areas. If that's the case, then Maria would say, we would come in, you know, November, December, Jan. Whenever those numbers come to fruition, if we see that the district's doing better than what we thought financially, that's when we'll come and say, hey, let's evaluate this, you know, going to 250, 500. You know, should we look at something for our employees? Should we look at investing in something that we haven't done? So, we're, we don't want to do any of that right now just because we don't know. But there, we're hoping, but who knows? I mean, because we've already cut building budgets, we've already, we've cut other areas about as lean as we can. So there could be some things that pop up that, the maintenance or buildings that could heat some, any surplus up. So, but we'll keep abreast of all that. But I, I have to tell you that Maria and the administrative team and in our office, what we do is we're getting really good at this. We're getting good at understanding the game. We don't play any games, but we understand how we can maximize our revenue for our students in our community. Now we can also be as, as honest and keep our taxpayers always in mind to know that we want to minimize what money comes out of their pocket as much as we can as long as we can still maintain great schools for our kids. So this has been an evolution and it's been a learning process and it's going to continue to be that way. So, but I want to thank Maria, I want to thank the administrative team for all their work, our educators for, I mean, moving up 60 kids. There's a reason that is. And I call it the, I call it the produce reason, church reason. When people go to church or they go to the produce island, they're looking at, you know, apples and watermelons and they start saying good things about their schools instead of hearing, God, I don't want to work there. Hey, you have some job openings. You know how you would hear that? I think that's one of the reasons, is that families feel welcome here and we have, our, our staff likes it here. Which is, like as, what was, what did Bill Foster say? He goes, one of the main things about looking at anybody and investing is, is your staff feel this is a good place to work. If not, good chance at getting anything done to try to improve your school. That was, so we're working on all that, but always looking at our achievement, hopefully. You're going to see data. I've asked all the administrators, of this whole equation, we still need to get that achievement growth data so that we can see all these things are working. And that's, you're going to see more and more data this year than ever before. Not to show what we want to show, but show what's happening so that either we continue and maintain or we change if it's not working.
Just a really short, funny story. I, I hear from Mrs. Manager in Fond du Lac, every time I see her, she comments on how we're taking their kids. And the day before the transfer of service was due, of course, we're getting a lot of their kids again. So as I'm entering them in, she's looking, they kept coming in because they have to approve them all. So I saw her at a meeting on that Friday and she said, are you kidding me? You know, there had to be 20 of them that were, at least 25 of them coming from Fond du Lac. So, there's something to be said for our districts and our staff here that they want to come. And it's being noticed.
And we're not sitting still. Project Lead the Way at the high school, middle and elementary school, cap classes more than we have ever had before. Maybe, we're not only serving students that maybe have the most needs, we're actually adding and adding for the students at the, at the end that are more advanced so that they can do dual credits. And that's huge. I mean, just personal thing, my daughter's probably going to leave here with like 19 credits. It's going to cost us all less than 800 bucks. It's amazing, so.
And I was going to add, I just, you know, I can speak to the other building, but for our building, okay, we've had some EL students that we've added new this year and students that have, you know, different needs academically and things like that that we also added. I looked at, I think, six cumes of kids that they were taking advanced math classes in their old schools or they're scoring advanced in their state tests. And I'm calling the parents of Southie where to replace them and, you know, had some of those discussions too, some high achievement students. So, I just got done calling all these families, just welcome and they're all just really happy. And I think four or five of them said to me, well, we would have made this change sooner. So, it's been a great thing in our building.
All right, move on.
Anything else?
So, I'd say a motion during the special budget workshop meeting.
I'll make a motion. All right. Wonder if there's anything going on in the state that people wouldn't want to come to the board meeting?
What, 41? I should have no problem.
You're getting invited.
All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Fond du Lac to order with a roll call vote, please.
Chisholm.
Here.
Kowalski, here. Hack. Streeter.
Here.
Will.
Thank you. A report on public notices, please.
Thank you, President Chisholm. Public notices and agendas were mailed to the Fond du Lac reporter, radio station KFIZ and 107.1 The Bull, WFDL radio. And agendas were posted at the district office, US Bank and municipal building on Friday, September 25th, 2015.
All right, sir. Please address your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes were approved, or, sorry, minutes were distributed in your package. Any additions or corrections or comments to the minutes? Very not entertained a motion that they be approved?
Is that a motion?
Is that, that's a motion.
No.
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 It's not?
I'll trade you a few for it.
I'll give it something. All right, so the minutes will then be approved as they were presented. Mr. Streeter, could we hear the treasures report this month, please?
Cash balance on hand, August 7th, 2015, $346,230.71. Receipts, 8815 to 92815, $1,308,358.41. Transfers from investment accounts, $500,000. Total receipts, $2,154,589.15. Expenditures, 88 to 92815, $1,528,477.12. Total expenditures, $1,528,477.12. Cash balance on hand, September 28th, 2015, $626,112.31. Bills are recognized, and is shown in the attached list, dated to them in the amount of $1,663,399.31. Bills be approved in September meeting, to approve checks, $1,503,437.12. Board meeting checks, $160,316.14. Total bills to be approved, $1,663,399.31.
I'll entertain that as a motion then? Do we approve those expenses?
Is that a motion?
One second. All right. It's been moved in second. Any discussion or questions about the expenditures to be paid?
Just a clarification, just so you know why it's from 88. Maria was over in Italy working with the Pope to kind of lay the groundwork for her to come here. So she was left a little early with her family. So that's why this is a little bit bigger since then. And I think you did a good job. I think Francis is the holy one, he's been a great choice. It's a great job.
Yeah, we've been lying.
Any questions about expenditures that anyone has? Hearing none, then roll call vote for the total of the expenditures. Will.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Quick report.
We have donations, Fond du Lac Running Club, $150. Toward Tri-Crescendo Fund, JP Patterson, John Cool, $500 for bots. IQ Integrity Wire, EDM Al Weiss, $100, bots IQ. Ken Stefani, $200, Vex Robotics. Fond du Lac Area Foundation, $650 for artist in residence at FLC. $500 for ALC Art Program. Festival Foods, Randy Gorski Grocery Card at FLC for student use.
Yeah, it's one of the little ones, it's nice.
We have a lot of thank yous, which I can just pass, from Touchdown Club, families, Running Club for the use of our facilities and, oh, the square dance, square and round dance people. Thank you. Notes from all of them.
Okay, except a lot of the next one.
You didn't want me to read all those, did you? Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is student council report. So.
If I'll just jump ahead, since this is going to be in our student superintendent's report, I'll pass it over to Ms. Freeman. She can introduce this year's student council president.
Sure. Hunter Wallery is our student council president. Hunter is here to present a little bit of the information about student council. She'll be here each month. I'm going to let her go with it. Student council is just off to a great start, looking at different committees and ways that they can support our school this year. So I'm really excited to have Hunter as a part of the school board and she's really excited to sit at the head table with you guys.
Yeah. So lately, student council has been working on stuff for homecoming. So, what student council does is they put on Spirit Olympics and so we have a whole bunch of fun games. And so we wrote on that and so we're excited for that. And we're also doing different committees. We have a student issues committee. And so then we get to basically help make the students happy, but at the same time make sure that they're reasonable and try to make a happy medium. So, like one of our issues is that some of the students wanted another microwave in the cafeteria because there's only two and there's usually big lines. So we're trying to do that. I think we're pretty close doing that, so. Yeah, that's about it right now.
Thank you and welcome. Next on the agenda is citizens input. So I will turn over the floor to anyone wishing to make any comments to the board under citizens input. Hearing done, I will close the citizens input portion of the meeting at 7:15. Next on the agenda, I OJ, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Hunter, welcome. And I look forward to having you here in the board of the last year input periodically. But thank you very much for representing the school by being here and coming. You will receive something at the end on your last May meeting. We'll get you a name tag. I think it's very important, you should have that also, so we'll take care of your welcome. Future board agenda items, insurance renewal hopefully in October. Facilities committee update, we'll do that also in October. I'm going to be...
gonna be calling Bray this week to get some ideas of costs, and be working with Bill Foster. And then, just really quick, who wants to be working with Maria, myself, and we wanted to have a board member? That works. I think, Mike, you'd be great, just be, kind of get an idea, you got kind of a policy, kind of idea of what questions should be. And I'd like somebody else, too, if that'd be okay, that we can work by. So, we'd have a committee of four, Vicki?
Sure.
All right, so us four, Maria and I will kind of get this stuff and get it going. You guys will get more information about that, and then us four can have conversations about what should we strike, how should it look, what should it be, so then we can come forward in January with an idea and go from there. So, we'll make sure that when Bill Foster starts getting us information, I'll include you two guys also in those correspondence. And then we'll have our administrative goals in October. I know Adam had shared some things already, but we're really gonna be driven by data and finding results that we can show what we're doing. If it's working, great, let's continue. If it's not to the level we need, then we need to change something. So, that will be coming in October. Safety workshop, a summit is gonna be before the October board meeting. We do that every year, so that should be exciting. And we just kind of inform parents and whoever wants to come about what it is of safety and go through our plan, take recommendations. Tom Kubis, who helps coordinate that, will be here. And then, remember the annual meeting, which is at seven o'clock the third Monday of October. You'll get more information about that, but we should have some good numbers. I'm not sure if we're gonna have our normal crew that usually shows. Maybe we will, maybe we won't, but it's gonna be like normal. There's no additional items that I can see that we'll put on there, and we'll talk about all the normal items that'll be, that are normally on our agenda. And then the final thing that I have, and then open it up if you have any questions, is I wanna just say, and I'm gonna start when I get these from DPI, that we do have National School Lunch Week, October twelfth through the sixteenth. Once again, National School Lunch Week, October twelfth through the sixteenth, so we'll be giving high fives to our lunch ladies. Hopefully, Earl Mark will be doing some fun during that time to help us out, so we've got this. So, proclamation, it's coming. Be ready. Can't wait to do the one for our crossing guards. That'll be fun. Other than that, I have nothing. Administrators, do you have anything that's pressing?
Excellent.
Board members, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
I rest. All right. Thank Mr. Sado. Next on the agenda, items of new business. Number one, discuss and consider the appointment of Joe Gievel, Kim Broton, Jenny Stahl, Linda Krebsbach, Elizabeth Flaherty, and Luanne Urban as local education representatives for IEP meetings for special education students during the fifteen-sixteen school year.
This is something we do every year. There's just a couple names different, Jill and Elizabeth, or Liz Flaherty. This is, our administrators will always ninety-nine or ninety-five percent of the time be there when they can, represent the district, and make sure everything legal happens, and that we do the right things for our kids that have special needs. But in case we can't, this then gives our counselors, our, Linda Krebsbach is our social worker, and then Elizabeth Flaherty, who's our psychologist, the authority to be IEP LEAs that represent the district, to make sure the process goes the way it should.
All right. Any questions or discussion from board members? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we approve those appointments.
Make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Item number two, discuss and consider preliminary budget for the fifteen-sixteen school year, as was presented earlier this evening.
There you go. We're balanced. Last year we bought a three thousand dollar deficit, but we're gonna work on that. So, but yeah, you got the information.
Okay. Any questions that didn't come up in the last discussion? I think it's great, actually, so, great, great work, and I'm sure that some additional bodies will cause us a little bit of challenge here and there, but we'll get past that, so...
But states the need. That's something that we have to have need in order to justify things. We're gonna do so. We're getting the need.
Any other questions or discussion? Not all entertain a motion to approve the preliminary budget that was presented in the budget workshop.
Will?
I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and consider resolution for line of credit from the American Bank.
We've been doing this. Pretty soon, Mr. Chatterton's gonna say, "Come on, man. We're having this money set aside, and you're not using it." But they've been very fortunate. We have a great relationship with American Bank, and this is something that we've done. We don't foresee having to use it, but it's a safety net.
Okay. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the line of credit.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Will?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Big Mark?
Did I gloss over one?
Well, that's coming up in October at the beginning. It'll be from six to seven. Before a meeting, we, every year, we have that to just kind of inform parents, take input, and inform, and have Tom Kubis present what we do. Alice. The safety is no accident.
Item number four, discuss and consider the contract additions for the fifteen-sixteen school year. They're listed there. Aaron Luther, ten percent salary increase as an E-three academy supervisor. Carly Sawitzky, hundred percent reading educator from Friendship Learning Center, up to ninety percent. She deals too.
Yep, and Aaron Luther, that's all paid for by our, the E-three academy grant. And then Carly Sawitzky, we, remember back when I suggested, or when we came with Amy Mockard drop, and then Sharon Tollner was added, and then we wanted to keep it kind of static on how many full-time FTEs that we had for reading. While Carly came in, we hired at ninety percent, and with increased students, especially with ELL students, we have reading needs. And she's there, but this will give us a little bit more access. She's okay with doing it, and it's, it's not that costly to add her to be full-time to help us with our reading needs.
It's a little over six thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve those additions for the fifteen-sixteen school year as presented.
Make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number five, discuss and consider resignation.
All right, so these three, we have three of them, and we'll be, have many times to celebrate the first one as we go on, including already planning the party for in May and June, as an extravaganza. Melanie, who has done a great job in public education for many years in our district, I just really appreciate that all of her service, but she told us early enough, we're already starting the process to look at how to fill that, and she's just a great lady, and I consider her more than a colleague, I consider her my friend, so thank you very much. Nice job. And you'll have your time. You're gonna put away some time in like June so you can have your last, kind of like...
Or is it wisdom?
Yes, yes.
Just from a logistics question, the resignation ahead of retirement is necessary so that we can put in motion the...
Makes it easier. Makes it a lot easier. We can pull, we could have pulled before too, but this just makes it cleaner, gives the intent, and after tonight, then it'll be like, yep, we'll go for it, so. But, yeah, it's just, it's really nice to do that, I think, from a human resources standpoint, to be upfront, honest, and not have to deal in the hypotheticals. Then Jenny Stahl's done a great job with coaching. She's got some, some other things that she's looking at, but will still continue to be a great counselor. She's designed for the JV girls' basketball. And Pat Colby, he's football, ice fishing, coming up. We're hosting an ice fishing state thing in like the fourteenth or seventeenth of October. I mean, the whole state's coming here for ice fishing banquet. It's gonna be pretty sweet. Pat coaches that, so he, and he's got a little, little girl, and kind of got a lot of stuff going down. So, they're all still great employees right now, and Melanie will continue to be somebody who I'm sure will be a sage and give us a bunch of information as time goes on, and we can cry and, and high five and stuff later on. Not tonight, though, right? We've got a lot of time for things to happen, and have some tenuous conversations.
All right, any other, any questions or discussion from the board? I have a question. How are we, what does it do for the JV girls' basketball and eighth grade boys' basketball as far as the remaining coaching staff?
Brandon Switch is moving up to eighth grade. We posted for seventh grade positions. Still looking, Mike's working through that. Jenny Stahl, Nate Testrodio's gonna be JV two, which is old-school freshman. He's gonna move up to JV, and then we're looking for freshmen or JV two coach.
Okay.
And Nate, we passed, approved last board meeting.
All right. Any other questions from the board members? If not, I would entertain a motion to consider the resignation of Melanie, Jenny, and Pat.
Make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I would like to respectfully add regrets to those positions. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number six, discuss and consider extra duty contracts for Ken Gievel for middle school wrestling, and Chris Dolan for soccer assistant.
And Ken, he's been doing this, no matter what I ask him, "Are you ready?" He goes, "I've been doing it for six, seven years already," so. He does a great job, and then Chris has been a big help with our field, with our, our united team. Matter of fact, he's engaged to Tiffany Torres, who are getting married in December, so. And Tiffany's one of our outstanding teachers at FLC.
All right. Any other questions or discussion from the board? I'd entertain a motion that we approve those extra duty contracts.
Make that motion.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Streeter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number seven, discuss and consider extra duty compensation adjustments and additions.
And now, we can pay Ken if this passes, so. But this doesn't add in our extra duty adjustment, or compensation. It has a percentage of whatever the basis. When the base changes, that increases the coaches or advisors' pay. My recommendation is to have the percentage be the same as middle school volleyball, which is happening around the same time, which turns out to be one thousand thirty-seven dollars. I didn't think it'd be appropriate to put something different there, like just a solid amount. It should be in the same manner, I believe, of what we have already, is our understanding of how we structure that. And then, with seventh and eighth grade basketball, it used to be the eighth grade got considerably more than the seventh grade, and it's pretty much the same amount of work. So, at this time, the recommendation from Mike, the athletic department, is, hey, let's just put those together, and they're gonna get paid the same. So, seventh and eighth grade coaches will both get one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. We had, we struggled finding out why that was different. It's not an increase in cost, it just takes and equalizes. Instead of eighth grade getting paid six hundred dollars more than the seventh grade coach, they're equal.
All right. Questions or discussions? Seems to make sense. It's the same amount of work. Any other questions or discussion? Then I would entertain a motion that we approve the extra duty compensation adjustments as, as presented to the board.
Make that motion.
One second.
Roll call vote, hearing?
Streeter?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Number eight, discuss and consider contracting with school perceptions for data collection and survey planning.
And that was Bill Foster. Everybody was there, found out what it would be. This is a contract that, once it's approved, I can sign it, and it's, would be for approximately ninety-three hundred dollars. Breaks down to sixteen hundred dollars for strategy development, twenty-eight hundred dollars for the design, two thousand four hundred dollars for the administration, and then twenty-five hundred dollars for the reports and information once it's open. So, this is kind of an estimate, but I had, when Bill came in, I don't know about, you know, your kind, but he was very, I feared nothing, but if you want to do something like this, you gotta talk to this guy. And what I love about what he said, and I got the feeling that he's unbiased, he's that outside stuff, I'd have a hard time saying to the public, "Okay, we're gonna do a survey about our, about our buildings and our needs and possible referendum. Oh, and by the way, the school's gonna design it, so that we ask the questions, so that we get the answers that we think are appropriate." I, I think this is a great way to go, and I entertain, do you guys have any other comments or thoughts from being at that meeting, that any difference or concerns, or...
Well, I thought he kept it going, you know, and had a lot of good suggestions. He was the one that kind of stalled, and just, you know, had something in there to just keep us moving along, so. He kind of, he needed that direction, and he was really fishing for it. So, it was good that he got it, and I'm looking forward to the process.
I appreciated his experience and, and the group, the group conscience kind of, you know, morphed into what the plan was. And the other thing that sold me on him is, is that he admitted that he's, his organization was part of two failed referendums in our, in our area, and with the explanations of why. And so, it just underscores to me that if you want to be successful in this, then you have to engage somebody who does that for a living, and you need to listen to his message, so.
Yeah, and I really liked how it evolved, instead of dragging our feet. I think, Mike, you had some really good input, and then Melissa and Vicki and P. Hey, you know, if we're gonna do this, let's not be coy here, and let's get that information, let's be upfront, and we've, we've taken time already, you know. So, I love it. I'm excited to see how this works. So, hopefully in time, after we're through this process, my vision would be is we're gonna be one of these many school districts that I say, "You know what, Bill? Put us on your reference." We'll wait until that time. Hopefully, we're gonna be so happy that we'll be on it.
Where does the ninety-three hundred dollars come from? What part of the budget? It's in there. It's under, it's actually under the board section.
I saw it with someone.
It's, it's with, like, we have a contract with Neola, so that's in there. But, yeah, I think I have budgeted ten thousand dollars for the survey, so.
You, you have a category of kind of a loose collection of outside contract services, right?
Correct.
Something like that.
That was, yeah.
So, any other questions from the board?
Well, the only thing we did do is finalize that we're gonna put the ladder truck question on there, too.
Well, he said that there was partnerships and some of the projects, so. I'll entertain a motion, then, that we approve contracting with school perceptions.
Make that motion.
Okay, move it.
I'll second that.
All right, so move it seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
And motion approved. All right, that brings us to letter L, adjournment. Now, I would like to point out to our new student council member that this is an unusual, brief meeting. They are not all this...
Yes, you continues to drag it on.
Yeah, as everybody else is.
So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have a roll call now, please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
As the records reflect, the school board meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-three.
All right. Guess what? That's a record right now.
His experience and, and the group, the group conscience kind of, you know, morphed into what the plan was. And the other thing that sold me on him is, is that he admitted that he's, his organization was part of two failed referendums in our, in our area, and with the explanations of why. And so, it just underscores to me that if you want to be successful in this, then you have to engage somebody who does that for a living, and you need to listen to his message, so.
Yeah, and I really liked how it evolved, instead of dragging our feet. I think, Mike, you had some really good input, and then Melissa and Vicki and P. Hey, you know, if we're gonna do this, let's not be coy here, and let's get that information, let's be upfront, and we've, we've taken time already, you know. So, I love it. I'm excited to see how this works. So, hopefully in time, after we're through this process, my vision would be is we're gonna be one of these many school districts that I say, "You know what, Bill? Put us on your reference." We'll wait until that time. Hopefully, we're gonna be so happy that we'll be on it.
Where does the ninety-three hundred dollars come from? What part of the budget? It's in there. It's under, it's actually under the board section.
I saw it with someone.
It's, it's with, like, we have a contract with Neola, so that's in there. But, yeah, I think I have budgeted ten thousand dollars for the survey, so.
You, you have a category of kind of a loose collection of outside contract services, right?
Correct.
Something like that.
That was, yeah.
Great.
So, any other questions from the board?
Well, the only thing we did do is finalize that we're gonna put the ladder truck question on there, too.
[laughing] Well, he said that there was partnerships in some of the projects, so. I'll entertain a motion then that we approve contracting with school perceptions.
Make that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Kowalski, yes.
And motion approved. All right, that brings us to L, adjournment. Now, I would like to point out to our new Student Council member that this is an unusually brief meeting. They are not all this casual.
As you continues to drag it on.
Yeah. As everybody else is coming.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have a roll call now, please?
Streeter.
Yes.
Kowalski, yes. Chisholm.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
The records reflect, the school board meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-three.
All right. Guess what? That's a record right now.
All right, so, here, what do you do with these?